The meeting with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I'd like to reminisce reflect that we had a executive session prior to the meeting tonight for personal reasons regarding vacancies. On the screen you can see how we will communicate tonight. When you're let in, we'll need your name, an address, township or borough, and you get four minutes on agenda items. And at the end there'll be four minutes on non-agenda items, four minutes total. Okay. Thank you. Now we'll open up for public comments on agenda items. Do we have anybody in the waiting room? In the chat? In the chat?
Not yet.
Okay. We'll wait a few minutes.
The chatroom should be open. We do have some citizens that would like to chat.
Okay, Mary Jean, if you can, first one start.
Jody King, you should be able to unmute yourself.
Hi, my name is Jody King. I represent a group called United. We have over 200 citizens. I'd like to speak on something regarding a hiring of a freshman girls' coach. On October 12th, I wrote an email to the school board, the athletic director, the superintendent, the principal, and the coach and teacher involved.
I don't believe that's on the agenda for tonight?
I believe it is.
I'm missing that?
Yeah, that's on the agenda.
Okay, go ahead.
I hope that doesn't take from my time. I informed all of you of several incidents involving Mr. Robinson, one of which he had screamed uncontrollably within an inch of a student athlete's face at a game, causing parents from both schools and officials to be concerned. This was abuse, plain and simple. My child was physically ill over this incident. She feels like she was complicit in this abuse by not standing up for her teammate and friend. He admonished all teammates who reached out to their teammate, telling them they need to watch what they say in a text among their teammates, as if supporting your teammate is wrong. Telling girls that if they were upset that he screamed in someone's face, it is because they are weak. Again, this is manipulation and abuse. Then he began benching those players who showed concern for most of the season after that. He and the assistant coach remarked players' abilities to other players. When I raised these concerns, he attempted to blame the student athlete instead of addressing his behavior. He stands by what he did, that he would do it again. I also noted in my email his verbal attack on another parent when she tried to speak to him, screaming at her on the football field where it could be heard over in Triton's parking lot by many witnesses. The assistant coach called parents lined up to enter a school board meeting, rednecks. Our coach did not object to him calling them rednecks. A student of one of those parents was actually present on the bus when this was said. The coach and the assistant coach actually admitted to this behavior. As a result of my email, only two of you replied by email, Mr. Burke and Ms. Bennett Fox, both saying that all of these issues would be looked into. Hi, Arnold, through Facebook messages, said I wrote back to the admin, Todd, Ken, Colleen, as well as officers Burke, Farr, and chairman of the extracurricular, and asked an investigation, including parents and players and officials, be opened. I'd like to know why that wasn't done. I would like to know why the school board would consider a man with no control over his anger with women to coach another female team. A man who has not offered to apologize at all. He continues to say his behavior is appropriate. He would do it all again. Is it okay if he did this to your child? I'd like to ask every school board member that question. I have watched what this has done to my child. I can assure you that seeing your happy child turned into one who was physically sick with worry before games and practices is absolutely awful. You should all consider the consequences of voting this man for a position of coaching again, especially for female students. I am positive there will be more consequences. And with that, I yield.
Thank you. Please, when you say your name, tell us also your residence, township or municipality that you live in.
Jennifer Brody, you're unmuted. You should be able to speak.
I'm a resident of Center Morlin.
Thank you.
Excuse me?
Thank you.
Oh. This is from the TAST's Athletic Philosophy and Varsity Mission Statement. Interscholastic athletics is an integral part of the total educational program at Toncanic Area and is designated to provide a positive learning experience for its participants. The leadership should be of the highest quality so as to exemplify to the participants the desired type of individual to be developed from the athletic program. Interscholastic athletics should provide an opportunity for its participants to grow physically, mentally, and emotionally. Coaches and players will respect the judgment and integrity of sport officials. Here's what my daughters learned. It's okay to be screamed at loud enough that other teams' visitors and refs are in disbelief. It's okay for a coach to scream in a teammate's face during a game while they, the other team refs, the principal, and their athletic director all witness the event. If a coach acts like that, it's 100% accepted by other coaches, their principal, their AD, and the majority of parents, as no intervention happened. That if their coach screams uncontrollably at them, it'll be expected that they later apologize to their coach for further submission to the abuse. That if they comment in a group chat, it'll be reported to the coach and they'll get a lecture about watching what they say about their coach. That if they stick up for a teammate, they'll get less playing time and be the last to be put in games. It's okay for a coach to call your community a bunch of rednecks. It's okay for your coach to say teammates are horrible if they're on the playing field. It's okay for a coach to encourage foul play during a game. That if you're not as skilled as other players, you will not be coached. You will be ignored. That it's okay for a coach to mock you in front of the team if you beat a higher skilled player. You may have to watch your sister be treated miserably because she isn't friends with the coach's daughter like you are. If you're offended by the coach's torment, then you need to grow a thicker skin. If you can't take being screamed at, then you're weak. That if the coach forgets you, it's okay because he forgets a couple of the girls on the team. That if you don't go along with the coach, it's because you personally don't match his personality and you should adapt. That it's okay to be disrespectful of the ref and argue with the team, even if it's, or argue with them, even if it's just a scrimmage. It's okay for a coach to be thrown out of a game for being disrespectful for a ref. It's okay for your mom to be screamed at in the face after your team's meeting when she's standing up for another player that you've been friends with for 10 years that just quit? That the athletic director won't do anything about the coaching because that's his reputation? It's okay for your athletic director to play on his phone and totally ignore you when you're called into the office to speak about incidents that happened during the season and feel totally disrespected? That a teammate who reports incidents to the principal will also be ignored? And you can win one game all season and still have 10 All-Stars on your team? Here's a couple of the things that I've learned. If you've never heard of the 24-hour rule, it's 100% justification for being screamed at and it's okay for your daughter to hear it. It's okay for a coach to call you a liar and say your opinion doesn't matter. When the athletic director says he will address a coach, he won't. When you're told all of your concerns were validated, that still nothing will happen to the coach? That it's possible to tell a coach that your daughter has been physically ill due to the drama that has been created by what he's doing? And he can sit right in front of you trying to justify every complaint one by one and show zero remorse, say he would do it all 100%? And more shocking, the principal and AD can hear it and still do nothing. If you request knowing the outcome of school board committee's investigation, they'll refuse to close the loop with you? So, to any parent of a female freshman basketball player, be warned that same coach is going to have a meeting tonight. And I asked for his resignation. Here's your chance to do it right, school board. Don't vote on him. And ask for his resignation and send the right message to our daughters.
Thank you.
Mr. Yuhas, you may unmute yourself. Mr. Yuhas, you have the ability to unmute yourself as the other participants did. You can do so by clicking on the microphone with the red slash through it. Mr. Yuhas, we'll move on to the next citizen and make sure that they can unmute and then we'll come back to you. Russ Knight, you can unmute yourself.
Bear with me, I'm not a public speaker.
Russ, where do you live, please?
In Toncanic Area School District. My name is Russ. I am representing a group of parents and we're a United Group. We are a group of almost 200 strong and growing.
What township?
I live in the township.
Toncanic Township?
Toncanic Township, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Where do you live, Phil?
I'm over in a township.
Okay, thanks. We are a group of almost 200 strong and growing. Tonight I speak for myself, I also speak for my group. Upon learning this week about the abuse of students and a parent, by a teacher and a coach, I want to say first, I'm disappointed in the board, and second, extremely disappointed in the admin to have done nothing. Nothing as in this monster is still coaching and was allowed to continue to coach and is still teaching. This behavior is disturbing. This is not the behavior of a real man or any authoritative figure. Emotional damage to these young men and women is potentially carried for life. Teaching young women that being verbally abused by a male figure and doing nothing is unacceptable, archaic, and disgusting, and you should all be ashamed of yourself for letting this behavior into our school and district. Mr. Burke, on November 11th, you said in regards to being accused of abusing children. I don't want to sit silent and let other people run the show. Yet you are, number one, a board member who has done nothing about this abuse, and number two, part of the HR committee and still haven't stopped this abuse. The fact is that the teacher in question was allowed to return to coaching and teaching. So if I listen to you say you won't sit silent, I guess that's true. I guess it's only an issue if it's directed at you personally, never mind the numerous children this is affecting over a period of time. Every day this monster is around the children, you should be embarrassed and ashamed. Multiple people have commented in private groups and publicly about many, many occasions this monster has verbally and mentally abused children. Reports of throwing desks in class, and these reports grow as more people come forward. Unfortunately, we live in a small community and a lot of people don't want the backlash of speaking out and retribution from this monster in question, staff, and other community members. Right here and now, this member of the TAST faculty should never be allowed back onto school property. Anything other than that sends a clear message to this community that TAST accepts the abuse of children and parents. Heather McPherson, as a role model to young women, act like it. I have nothing further.
Thank you.
Mr. Yuhas, if you would like to try to unmute yourself, you can speak now. Mr. Yuhas, your mic has been open as it has been for other citizens to speak. You could speak now. Well, Mr. Yuhas was trying to figure out how to unmute. Lanell Farber, you can unmute yourself.
Yes, hi, good evening. I'm Lanell Farber. I am a parent and also a member of the United Parent Group. I just have a couple of-
Lanell, what township do you live in, please?
I don't live in a township.
What borough?
I live right next to John Burke.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. I just have a question, a couple of questions, actually regarding the payment summary that's in this month's agenda. So often, we as parents just sit in the audience and listen to the school board approve payment after payment with not really knowing much about what it is that you guys are approving. So I have a couple of questions regarding this month's payment summary. There's numerous payments to other school districts. I know that at some point maybe in the spring, we approved two students to attend Sullivan County School District, but I was wondering why there's numerous payments to other school districts, such as $3,509 to Central Susquehanna Intermediate Unit, $9,881 to Chester County Intermediate, $3,312 to Forest Area School District, and $5,292 to Grove City School District, for a total of $21,994 paid to other school districts.
Phil, can I answer Lanell, please?
Yes.
Lanell, they are on what? They are the cost of when we have to spend, send a special education student out for services. That is what we have to pay that school district or LIU to, for their tuition and their education because they can't, we cannot educate them in Toncanic. So that's how that, that works. And sometimes with the LIUs, we have to bring in like hearing specialists to work with some of our hearing impaired students. So that's why we pay tuition to the other districts.
Okay, thank you, Lori. I was just looking for clarification. It's very confusing when you're looking through and see one school versus another.
That's for most of our special ed students. And on top of that, you know, you'll find going through transportation, we have vans that transport kids to Scranton to different places so that they can be educated.
Okay, the one that really threw me off was Grove City because I know that's out by Ohio.
Well, we may have a student out there that's in a residential setting and we have to pay for them to be educated while they're in a residential setting.
Okay. Okay, and I have just one other, one other piece. So I've been looking through some of the numbers and we've had this conversation before, but just bear with me for one second because it ties back into another portion of the payment summary. It's in regards to the number of students in the cyber charter programs outside of RC3. So we were provided some numbers at the meeting last week that there's now 128 students in cyber charter outside of RC3. It's an additional, it's an additional 21 students from when the mask mandate went into effect. And just on the very minimal side, by Superintendent McPherson's numbers, it would be $315,000 additional cost to the district for just those 21 students that have enrolled in cyber charter since the mask mandate went into effect. So I just, I went through the payment summary for this month and so far for just, for just this month's payment summary, it's, we're paying out for cyber charter schools to the tune of $270,000. And so far this year, we've paid close to $800,000 to cyber charter schools.
Ms. Farber, you have about 25 seconds.
I would like some further information regarding the pre-COVID numbers from 2019, 2020, and the cyber charter enrollment then versus what our cyber charter enrollment school attendance is now. And we currently have 264 students attending school outside of the district between the C3 students and the cyber charter students. That's a lot of students for a small school district.
I can provide those numbers at our next meeting.
Thank you, Heather.
Ms. Farber, we must mute you now. You're over your four minutes. Mr. Yuhas, we're going to try and give you another opportunity to unmute yourself. Shira Knight, you have the ability to unmute yourself if you would like to speak.
Hi, I'm Shira Knight. Hi.
Tell us your township.
I am Toncanic Township. I represent, I'm part of a group of United Parents of over 200 and then also another group of over 1,400 parents locally. As we look back at history, we see that there are many instances where battle lines are drawn. Sometimes we see that these lines were drawn at the appropriate time, but unfortunately, there are examples of people standing up far too late. For instance, only after some 6 million Jews were systematically murdered. Study history and you will find that the Holocaust was not an overnight event. It happened because rights were taken away little by little and people accepted this little by little, until one day, it was too late. I am proud to say here and now that we have a large group of parents willing to stand up and draw the line in the sand. We will not wait for you to continue breaking laws and taking freedoms from us as parents, taxpayers, and a community. You may not want to listen. You may convene an illegal Zoom meeting tonight, hiding your faces, trying to stifle us, but rest assured, we will not be silenced. You have rewritten illegal mandates, forcing our children to, sorry, forcing our children to wear masks. We have only gotten stronger in our resolve. We will fight for medical freedom. We are now aware of coaches verbally abusing teenage children, coaches that you have also allowed into our classrooms. We will fight to end this abuse. Last board meeting, the board's own policy 903, which reads, quote, "The board requires that public participants be residents or taxpayers of this district or anyone representing a group in the community or school district." This is your own policy. When the policy didn't fit your narrative, you illegally allowed a paid solicitor, not a member of the board, to adjourn the meeting. We are aware. We are aware of the policies. We are aware of the rules. We are aware of your blatant disregard for these policies. Folks, when you can't answer the hard questions, you can't just take your ball and go home. That's not how the policy works. For years, we have been blind to how our school board, administration, and some of the teaching staff operates. No longer. We are aware, we are united, and we are taking action. We will not look back on this time in history and say, we should have done something.
Thank you.
Kiara Harvey, you can unmute yourself.
Hello, this is George Yuhas. Can you guys hear me?
George, what township do you live in, please?
I live in Toncanic Township and I have a video again. And let me tell you something, this is the second time you guys did this to me. You shut, you not let me unmute. I have a video proven, I sent you the last video. This is nonsense. And my legal objection I'm about to give you is not part of my four minutes. Do you guys understand that or no? That's okay.
Your minute's going.
That's okay, that's fine. You go ahead and keep doing what you're doing. We have legal representation from this day forward. You guys just bought yourself legal representation. Okay, so that's what's going to happen. So I'm going to go ahead and move past this. I'm not going to tell you why it's a sunshine law violation and why you're breaking the First Amendment because it's a fact, you know it. You have poor solicitor. Your solicitor is doing you wrong. What you guys are about to go through and our, and our, I'm sorry, our district's about to go through is because you're ignorance, but ignorance of the law is not a defense. So you guys are about to be in big trouble. So, and yes, Bill, big trouble legally, financially, everything because you guys are really just terrible at doing this. And if you're screwing up the simple mask mandate, you guys are going to screw up every other mandate that comes forward. Now, I was part of a coach's, pre-coach's investigation before the pandemic where a coach was grabbing girls around their waist and coach was letting girls sit on their laps. And some girls, but not all girls, kind of like separating them, using it as a tool. Now, that meeting was supposed to be a private meeting. It was an open meeting, any parent could come. So that meeting was recorded. So now we have some common denominators. The curriculum or, you know, Bill Perbow or Mr. Boshier, these guys all sat in on that meeting and they're probably sat in on this other meeting. You guys are absolutely allowing this to happen. You guys are setting a culture that this is allowed to happen and that's why it's still going. So I want to know where can a coach, someone sit on their lap or grab them around their waist, especially girls? Where can teachers ask students to come over and do their makeups to come to their home? That's like asking my son to go pull the hairs out the back of a coach at his house. That's nuts. And this is happening in your school. You're allowing it because you're creating this culture. The same culture of you being unlawful and having this meeting in the first place. We have no right to do this. There's no state of emergency. This is only, the law is over. There's not being enforced to go to Zoom. You have to go back to in-person public meetings. That has to be an option to us and then you can go play Zoom in your own houses. But a public building has to be open to us to assemble. That's your First Amendment violation and it's too late. That is our first litigation against you. And you owned it, you bought it because you guys create this culture where you're unlawful. You have a terrible solicitor and you guys need to fire your solicitor, fires your firm, and get a new one because he's walking you guys in the traps and you don't care. And you don't care to even do your own homework. We have over 180 hours in two days invested in trying to get you guys information as advisors so you guys can see what the rest of your faculty is doing that we're pulling emails on. So you guys have got to start opening, you guys, the school board should be putting fricking four requests against the faculty and administrators so you can see exactly what they're doing. Because you can't trust them. You have to be a watchdog. You can trust but verify. You have to trust but verify and you're not doing, you need to be the watchdogs, not us. But that's okay. We're going to be here to advise you. Once the attorney kicks in, I'm going to be done telling you about your legal wrongdoings because I tried common law. I tried to help my district and I tried to be the guy to get you to turn the corner. You won't turn the corner. And it's not because of me, it's because you guys are adversarial. You're actually planning and plotting against the people. You're taking pictures, biometrics of citizens who attend your meetings. You guys are doing exactly what Arizona did. You're collecting information so when you plot and plan against your citizenry, instead of trying to graduate students, you have real troubles and there's real concerns about the administration and the board and you all better get the shit straight.
Thank you.
Sheila Donnelly, you should be able to unmute yourself to speak.
Sheila Donnelly, I live in the Toncanic Township.
Thank you.
Okay, last time I, at the school board meeting, I spoke about the mask mandate. I'd like to finish up on that, please. Our acting health secretary was the one who required masks inside K-12 schools and childcare facilities. That was thrown out last Wednesday by a state court who said she lacked the authority. And then the Wolf administration said the lawyers were directed to file an immediate appeal. The Commonwealth Court sided four to one in the state senate and others who sued to challenge the mask- The Commonwealth Court sided four to one in the state senate and others who sued to challenge the masking order that took effect in September as a result of the coronavirus.
The mask is not on the agenda. You have to wait till the end, please.
I'm sorry, I don't understand.
The mask.
On the agenda. You said it is not.
To come at the end.
Okay. Can I change the subject then? Okay, we have, I'll go back to another subject. This Zoom meeting, I had requested before, I had requested before to have dual meetings. Some people want to be on a Zoom meeting. Some people want to meet in person. I want to. There's people, there's people talking about this. There's people just now talking about this. And it was on the minutes from last. It was on the last, it was on. Last, the last meeting. So that's not the agenda. It was on the minutes from last meeting. Okay, so put me on the, put me on the public speaking from, at the end of the meeting then.
Thank you.
Ed is the last citizen to speak.
Thank you. I see we have 92 participants tonight. Moving on to item four, approval of minutes on November 11. We have a motion.
Motion approved.
Thank you. We have a second.
Second.
A motion, a second. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Dr. Pabola and Mr. Swilly are not here. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. Next item, number five, business and finance reports, items one through six. We have a motion.
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mr. Widener?
No.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. Item six, superintendent report. Heather?
Yeah, I'd like a motion to approve items one through three and five through seven, please.
Okay. Your motion?
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes.
I'd like to table item four, please.
Okay, thank you. You have any else before we go to committee reports?
No, only that we are doing, we are conducting interviews for principal and we are conducting interviews for the special education director and Mr. DeLuca, who you appointed as an interim. He started this week and he's been with us the last four days.
Okay, thank you. Committee reports, it was an extracurricular committee, meeting. Lori, can you report on that?
Um, yes, we did have an extracurricular committee meeting and we are going to continue with what we've already had in place with no changes being made.
Okay, thank you. I see we have no unfinished business. New business, the visa account is there for your information. And summary of the Kelly Services sub teacher fill rate is there as well for your review. Item three is a looking for resolution to approve a contract for a psychological services. We have a motion for number three.
Motion to approve, Bill.
We have a second?
Second.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yeah.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. Item four, looking for a resolution to approve functional connections as a provider of student services.
Motion to approve.
Thank you, Bill. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, Shayna. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. And item five, looking for resolution regarding the committee of funds for Peasars rate increases.
Motion approved.
Second.
In a second, thank you. Any discussion? Roll call, please.
Mr. Widener?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Bennett?
Yes.
Mrs. Gregory?
Yes.
Mr. Perry?
Yes.
Mrs. Arnold?
Yes.
Mr. Farr?
Yes. Okay, that's the end of the agenda items except for additional.
It's, Phil, it's Lori. I have a question. And John Burke, maybe you'll have to answer this. It's concerning the vote we just took. Over the last four or five years, this just keeps climbing that we're paying into Peasars. And I completely understand why we, we have to pay it and why we are. But John Burke, do you know the, happen to know offhand the difference between the last year or two years versus now?
For our total, for our total Peasars payments?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I don't know that off the top of my head, Lori. I want to say it's probably 3 million versus 07, 08 was about 800,000. So we're committed for a couple million dollars more on a yearly basis to fund retirement versus what we were 13 to 15 years ago. And so that's obviously been a big, big drag on, on our financials for sure.
Okay, thanks, John.
This is just actually committing the funds to designate them for future increases. This doesn't actually pay those at this point.
Right. I understand that. I was just wondering because it just keeps going up and up and up.
Yeah, I mean, it's an important thing to highlight. So everybody knows that, you know, we don't have as much money to do the day-to-day education as we did at one time due to the cost of benefits.
Right.
Yeah, the state runs that program and we have no say in it.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, our total, our total unfunded liability for the pension program at a district level, I think is around, it's in our last audit right off the top of my head. I don't have that in front of me. I want to say it's somewhere around $65 million is our portion of the Pennsylvania's unfunded pension liability. So, you know, that's different than this item, but it's important to note that there's a, there's, there's an impending problem out there that even through a really big bull market with high returns, that our portion at a local level of that Pennsylvania unfunded liability is, is north of $50 million.
Yeah, and, and that, that process, that program is set by state law from Harrisburg.
That's right.
We have no say in how that works. We have no say in what the, what the amount goes into that or who pays into it other than the state man dictates to us how much we owe based on payroll.
Yep. And there's been a lot of turnover and controversy around how that pension system was run. I read an article that they've moved away from some of the alternative investments to more traditional index funds, low-cost funds to get some of those costs out because the yearly management cost of that, of that is in the millions of dollars and the returns have been subpar.
Yeah, and as I say, it's completely controlled by Harrisburg.
Right.
Okay. Anybody else on the board have anything? Before we move on to public comments?
I, I had two comments. One, I'd like to ask that, well, a reminder that the first meeting in December is actually our reorganization where new board members would be brought into the board and any of our leaving board members would, would be finished with their term on the board. So that won't have a traditional agenda. So we won't need, you know, the only thing we're allowed to do by law during that meeting is bring on the new board, set and, uh, set the schedule for the next year and that kind of thing. So the next official board meeting where we do business is probably going to be either the ninth through the 16th. I believe it's scheduled for the 16th. There might be some discussion to change. We have one on the ninth. At whichever meeting that's going to be, the ninth or the 16th, I'd ask that we add an agenda item to discuss a past, a path forward with masking and contact tracing. We don't know if it's going to end the fourth. We don't know if it's going to end the 17th. You know, there's, it's all this legal chess right now. But I think as a board, we need to understand what we're going to do when that changes because it will be back in our hands to, to do that. So I would just ask that we add that to the agenda for the December meeting. And the other, the, the only other thing I want to say is to thank Shayna for, it's been wonderful working with her on the board. She and I have attended one time because of COVID. We went to, we went to a conference. She's always interested in wanting to know and do more with the board and she's going to be missed. And also Mr. Swilly and Mr. Perry, they've been very encouraging to new board members as they come on and they both brought a lot to the board in different directions and I, I will miss them as colleagues on the board.
Yes, I'd like to echo those comments. Losing some very helpful, great assets to the board. Both of Mr. Swilly, Mr. Perry, a lot of historical knowledge there, which you're going to be losing as well as Shayna. They've been excellent assets to the board since I've been on the board.
I also agree to that. They each had their area of expertise and it's been a wonderful relationship working with them.
Yeah, different board members have knowledge in different areas and it's been a great mixture. Okay, if no one on the board has anything else, we'll go on next to public comments on non-agenda items.
We do. Mr. Yuhas? You're unmuted. You can speak now.
You guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, I paid 20 bucks to use this phone from some poor little girl in a gas station, so I didn't get cheated. This is two times that you guys did this to him and I haven't recorded. So let's call it an oopsie, but I'm tired of the pandemic oopsies, okay? I think it's really crazy because you guys are doing it to me now. You'll do it to somebody later. So here's the deal. So now I would say let's do an investigation of why my phone and I sent you the first video. I'm about to send you a second video, why I won't unmute. Okay, I'd ask for investigation, but you guys, I've watched you guys do investigation on coaches that were complete failure. You, you can't even find the bad. All right, you have Heather McPherson and the school board members being threatened with life-threatening threats. Did anybody do an investigation? It's okay if you didn't because I called in the FBI for you. There'll be investigation into the death threats against the school board members and Mrs. McPherson, that's all over that one page. And there's even attorneys in town who know about it and well-to-do people. And you guys won't even put an investigation together. Did any of the school board members even think or the superintendent or anybody think to put an investigation together in that? No, because you guys don't follow the law. You don't care to find the law. Why are you not investigating death threats against the school board members and Mrs. McPherson?
I know nothing of this.
Don't, don't you cut into my time. No, you to be quiet.
You have an obligation to let us know.
Save it to the end. Save it to the end. So don't worry about it. I, we got the investigating start, investigation started for you, okay? So right now, for all the people who can hear this, our government, which is the first representative government that we can touch, our school board is organizing and forming against us. They are collecting biometrics of citizens and board members who are board, a board meeting, board meeting attendees. That's what's happening now and I can assure you that's illegal. They are publicly acknowledging that they want to change policies and procedures to quiet people and try to get control, which is control of the opposition force or the people who oppose them. I might be the opposing force today, but someday soon, whoever's listening to this, you may be an opposing person who also gets shut down. So do not allow your school board to change policies and rules to try to silence your First Amendment right. Because when you do, the levers of powers will switch one day and they will do the same thing to you. If they're doing it to me and I've been very measured about everything I'm doing, they're coming for you. So I would, you guys are welcome to do your investigation in unison with the FBI, but it's happening and you're welcome. And I'm sorry for you guys not doing it, okay? So now I'd like to know, what are we going to do for satisfaction on those coaches that were supposed to be investigated? You can redact names all you want. When does a citizenry get to report from Bill Pabola, Mr. Bosch or whoever to figure out what came of the investigation by redacting names? Who's going to help us with that? Where's the confidence? You guys are dug, you dug in so deep, you guys are in so much trouble, you won't stop. You don't know how to stop and I get it. I give you plenty of opportunities to turn around. This meeting is wildly illegal and you know it, but you just keep going down because no one's done nothing. We've raised thousands of dollars in less than two days for legal defense. We saved it. We waited, we waited. We wait no more. You won't hear us. We try to use common law and common sense. And since you guys will not allow common sense and common law to help, now we have to get an attorney. And, and let me tell you, it was the easiest thing in the world to raise that money. So now you guys will have to answer to legal and your legal, which is my legal sucks because you should never have passed that mask mandate. He knows it. I questioned him in front of Mrs. McPherson and Lori Bennett. They're a witness. I asked them why he allowed you guys to pass it the way you did and even Holly Arnold verified that you should not have done that. That wasn't on the agenda.
Thirty seconds.
And despite my efforts to try to stop you guys from walking into that trap, he let you do it and he's going to make money on us defending you. He should not defend you because he's the one who let you walk into that trap in the first place. Get rid of your solicitor, get rid of that law firm and start figuring out a way to get a different law.
Thank you.
Phil, I need to, to respond to Mr. Yuhas before we go any further. George, number one, to clarify the parents and the coaching issue, Mr. Pabola did say at the last meeting that after Thanksgiving, he was going to meet with the parent and Todd Bosch. That's number one. Number two, this is the first time I have personally heard of death threats. Now, do I feel some of stuff that's been said as a threat, but it was definitely not a death threat? This is the first, as I'm hearing it as a board member. And at some point tomorrow, I'll be contacting Phil. Because I have not heard of a death threat to anyone. That's new information to me as a board member. I just wanted that duly noted for the record.
Yes, it's a very death threat out there, which I have not heard of. They're definitely be taken seriously. Whether it's against a board member, faculty, staff, anybody. If it's against members of the public, that should be taken seriously and contact either local or state police.
Absolutely.
Sheila Donnelly, you've been unmuted. You may speak.
It's, it's very difficult to speak from Zoom. I'll just go back to that whole thing. We really need to meet in person. This is not fair. We need to be able to see your faces. Some of, we, we can see some of you. When we go back to meeting in person, I really would like the lights on in that room. It just feels dark. We're, we're in a dark room. We can't. We're, we're in a dark room, we can't see you, some of you are sitting on the floor, some are sitting in the stage, we can't see. Even if we walked into a bank or something and found you, we. I wouldn't even know if it was one of you to greet you. That, that just, that just needs to change. But you know, my goal really here is to. I really hope sincerely. That there is some kind of path for us to work together. Because our, our school board is supposed to be representing us as parents. The community. And certainly our children need to come first and that's just not happening here. Um, I don't know that I have any solutions, I just, I just really want this whole thing to change, I'm so, I'm just so sad that this is happening. Um, we just really need to fix this. And the other thing that I'm very concerned about is. Uh, going back to, I'm sorry that it's just a broken record, going back to the masks. I'll just repeat what I had to say because I think it's important. As I do have actually a question. I don't know that you can answer it, that's the other thing that's very confusing to me, we can't ask questions to get them answered necessarily at our school board meetings, but I will just put this out here. The state's disease. Control law does not give health secretaries blanket authority to create new rules and regulations out of whole cloth. Provided they are related in some way to the control of disease or can otherwise be characterized as disease control measures. That was what the judge Christine Fizano wrote. So that, that was the. Sort of the end result of this whole thing of getting rid of the mask mandate and then it's. The governor said, no, I'm going to challenge this, I'm going to appeal it, now we're back to December 4th. Where it's supposed to end, I don't even have any faith that it's going to end on December 4th because. Of this baseball game back and forth, I don't have faith that our health department will leave well enough alone with regard to citizens' rights. And parents' choice with regard to their children's health regarding mask mandates or whatever kind of other mandates that. Uh, regarding COVID are coming our way. So my question to this school board is what can we do about this and what can you do about this? You represent us, the parents, the community, we've been telling you, we don't want this. If people want it, they should be allowed to have a choice. Many of us are concerned about our rights and freedoms, so be continually taken from us and our voices are being silenced. When we are being, when we bring our concerns to the board. Um, even with this latest announcement with the mask mandates supposedly ending on December 4th. I just don't have faith that that's really going to happen, I hope it does. But that's my question to you, what is going to be done about this? Please listen to us, you're supposed to be representing us. And that's really all I have to say, thank you.
Thank you.
Jody King, you can unmute yourself and speak.
Um, first I want to address, um, uh, Mrs. Bennett, uh, you said that Dr. Pobola was supposed to contact me next week. Um, he did say that at Monday's meeting, the problem was on tonight's agenda was putting that. Same exact coach back into a coaching position of young girls. Once again, allowing him free access, free rein to do the same things he's done all season with the varsity soccer girls. And I cannot stand by and watch that happen, it's absolutely disgusting. It should be, it should be a shame to all of you. There are better candidates out there, we are surrounded by wonderful colleges with wonderful athletes. That would love to coach a, a student, a student body of Toncanic schools. Instead, we keep reaching in the same pot and keep ending up with the same results. So I'd like to know when the school board is going to actually get it through their heads. That maybe these people that people keep complaining about, I'm not the first, I won't be the last if you continue to put him in coaching positions. He will continue to do what he does because he's literally not been disciplined, he's literally been told it's okay. And now I'll move on to what my non-agenda item statement is. I am a parent of the United Group, we are members of over 200 parents. As parents, we do not consent to the mandatory masking of our children. We implore all schools to challenge the public health orders on masking. And institute a personal choice mask policy for all students. It must be the decision of parents and families as they are the best advocates for their children's health and well-being. It has been demonstrated in international peer reviewed studies in the disciplines of psychology, physiology and mental health that masking children is. Is ineffective, unsafe and unnecessary. Physical symptoms of mask wearing include headaches, nosebleeds, skin reactions. Fatigue, dizziness, reductions in cognitive function. Children with mask exemptions are experienced, it's. Excuse me, are experiencing coercion, bullying, disrespect, segregation, intimidation. Physical and emotional harm at school on a regular basis, our children are suffering. You're all sitting by pretending this doesn't matter, it does matter. The child who takes down his mask in class is told by the kid next to him, put your mask up. Because if you get COVID, then I get quarantined. The child who wears his mask is being told by another child, oh, you're choosing to wear a mask, you must be afraid of an imaginary disease. It goes both ways, when are we going to realize that we need to be the adults in the situation and do what's right by our children? Science says masks do not work, masks have solved nothing. Um, for, for a far, like by and far, many studies over and over again, masks have not solved the issue. Masks were supposed to stop the disease, but they did not stop the disease, it has gone on. We need to start getting back to a normal living environment, we need to give our children expression with their faces back. We need to teach our kids that we will stand up for what is right for them. And if all of you want to represent the people in your, in your area, in your districts. You better start listening, take a poll on your own Facebook page, I implore you to. Ask your citizens what they think, make it public, let everybody vote in your district and see what happens. You will find that 75% of the parents in this area would like to have the choice to whether or not to mask their children. And I gather it's probably higher than that. Thank you very much.
Thirty seconds.
Phil, may I respond? It's Lori.
Yes, Lori.
Um, Jody, if. I'm not sure if you're be able to follow along with the agenda. But Mrs. McPherson. Did table. Um, under the superintendent's report, number four. And, um. No coach, no coaches have been hired tonight. Because it has been tabled.
Thank you, Lori.
Karen Hackling, you've been unmuted, you may speak now.
It's Corinne Hackling and I'm from Lake Wenola.
Thank you.
Overfield Township. Um, one thing, last meeting when we were in person, which I feel that this is illegally done this way. But last time that we were in person, um, Heather went and put the CDC guidelines out there, which is, that's what they are, guidelines. It's not the law, she says she's following the guidelines, in my opinion. Parents should be reading those guidelines and making those choices for those children. Second, I want answers. My son is in fourth grade, was taken out of school two weeks ago on a Monday, I was forced to pick him up for coughing. I picked him up, kept him home the next day, he was fine, sent him back Wednesday. Walked upstairs with a mask on that makes it hard to breathe. While carrying things, gets to his classroom, is coughing again and immediately sent to the nurse's office where I was then. Reprimanded by the nurse and told, I was told to not bring him back unless I had a note stating that he had. Not had COVID, something different. Or until he was done coughing. Well, I got my son to the doctor and surprisingly, like I said, he has allergies. He missed a whole week of school. With makeup homework and that better not be sent home to me to be signed because it was because of the nurse for the whole week. My son is not sick, he has allergies, everybody gets the flu. I want to know what yous are going to do about sending kids home. And not teaching them. Second, my children were taken out quarantined, quarantined is for sick individuals. Not healthy ones. The masks are making them sicker, they have an immune system. When they're young, they're told, you're told, don't give them antibiotics because they won't work later on in life. It lowers their immune system when they get an antibiotic, it's to help their immune system after they get a fever. Fevers, my children haven't had a fever. I've had two children removed from school for 20 days. Because they had to double quarantine because somebody in their house tested positive. I myself tested positive twice and was never sick. Because I have an immune system and it works wonderful. I went to the doctor. The first doctor wanted COVID testing, blah, 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 my kid won't be let back into school without a proof that he doesn't have COVID. Second doctor sat there with the mask off his face because it's bull. It is for money. And I'd like to know where all your money is going. I have five children in the, in the district. One of them was taken out, he played the football team. Was taken out of school because he sat next to somebody on the bus who ended up negative. From what I heard and he doesn't sit close, so why was my IEP? Child.
Hackling, you have one minute.
Were removed from school, never given his work. And then was taken off of the football team because he couldn't get his grades up to date. And got to play for the last two weeks. Maybe three. I'd like an answer from one of you on how? This policy crap is going well for you or our children. Can I get an answer please from someone? And what grade level are my children actually on right now? Because I don't think that they've passed the last two years. Nobody, no comments. Shocking, I'm done.
Phil, can I respond?
Go ahead, Lori.
I do believe, uh. Our next meeting is scheduled, actually I believe for December 16th, Holly.
At this time, yeah.
At this time, and I do believe Holly made the recommendation that. The mandates and moving forward with a future plan would be put on the agenda for that meeting.
Thank you, Lori.
I just want to put a reminder. I, I just want to put on a quick reminder that the chat feature is for objections and for signing up to speak. Commentary on the meeting is not, uh, that that is, you know, abuse of the chat feature. So please just continue doing so.
Ellen Bales, Mary Jean.
Lanell Harper, you can unmute yourself.
Uh, problem with these meetings is them not being open and the ability for people to actually sign in, um.
Lanell, what country are you from?
I spoke earlier, Phil, really? So one of the problems of these meetings not being open to the public and in a, in a, in person. Is that, Phil, you had mentioned that there was 92 participants at one point on the call. But I know several households where there's multiple people sitting in front of the screen, listening to this meeting. So you're not even coming close to capturing the number of people that are participating. Or observing this meeting right now, whereas if we were in person, it could be 92 participants, it could be 180 participants. Or it could potentially be 40 or 50. But these meetings do not capture. The number of people that are truly interested in this and you continue as a board to dismiss our groups. And the parents of this district because you don't think that we're involved or we are coming to the meeting, so that must. That must mean that we're disinterested in what goes on in our school district and that can be farther from the facts. These meetings need to be open, they need to be in person, they need to be in public. The school board and the school district hiding behind their screens and your living rooms and your home offices. Is not acceptable for being public figures. That is all.
I just, I want to say, I, I, I think that maybe Phil's comment was misunderstood, he was just saying that there were, there were a lot of participants. Um. There are pros and cons to every site, every method of meeting and, um, I, I. The, having a blended meeting where we're using Zoom and in person is, is really not feasible. Um, that, I, I don't see the future for that right now with the technology that exists that we use. Uh, it was a big step, what, six years ago and Heather, I think it was, yeah, Heather did it. Um, to allow us to start streaming our meetings so that people could at least watch from home and see what was going on. And see it the next day or two days later or whenever they wanted to see it. Um, there, there are pros and cons, so there are aspects of this meeting that are more accessible to community members who. Don't have the babysitter, don't have all these other things. Um, don't have transportation. Whereas being online is a challenge for some other people, they don't have a strong enough internet connection, so everybody's going to have barriers. To attending a meeting, no matter how it is held. And our choice is how we overcome those barriers on either side of the coin. So I just, I wanted to stick up for Phil, I, I don't believe he said that, uh, 92 people were there as those to minimize it because. Quite frankly, most of our meetings have far less than 92 people that participate in person, so. We've actually had higher turnout pretty unanimously on Zoom meetings when we've had them. But that's not to say that there aren't benefits to being in person, and I just wanted to. Clarify.
Thank you.
Russ Knight, you've been unmuted, you may speak.
I have a question for Heather. Um, Corinne just said that, um, her child had been seen home. And wasn't in close contact or in close contact with a COVID student. That was not on your slideshow last week, should that be happening? Can you pause my time?
Um, Russ, I, I don't know the specifics of that case, I really can't, um, answer that question. Um, I will tell you.
Question is, should that be happening, children that aren't exposed to a probable or a, a, a positive case be seen home?
Russ, I'm sorry, can you, can you repeat that?
My question is, children that are not exposed to a positive COVID or a probable COVID, should they be being seen home?
No.
Okay, that is what Corinne is saying.
I, I understand that, I just can't speak to that case.
Okay, well, it'd be nice if someone could actually listen to her and explain to her why that's happening to her child. Second of all. Um, why was the agenda item for the, um, coaches, why was that benched?
I, I thought it best to table that item, so I didn't ask them to, to consider it.
Why? Because of the outcry from the public, like now you guys are only doing something? And when, and when will this be either put back on the agenda or will this be discussed privately?
No, I, I tabled it because I, you guys were saying some things that I did not understand. What was going on and I need to check into.
Just to, to pigtail.
Anyway, moving on, please don't interrupt me, I have four minutes.
Um, I'd like also to find out. Because I just wanted to clarify that there won't be a time when the board is discussing a particular employee in public.
What was on the agenda?
Well, to approve, uh, to approve an appointment or something like that, but as far as like an individual employee's performance or claims against them or those kinds of things. There's not a scenario where, you know. Like an HR type of situation would be discussed in public, so I just didn't want that to be the impression that you, you know. That that would come back to the agenda in some way, shape or form, that's all.
Okay, and my last thing quickly. Last year, obviously, we were, um, in discussion, we wanted no failure rates, we only ever found out. Uh, one marking period of failure rates, can I, can we please get the failure rates for the 1920 school year? The 2021 school year? And can we also find out the C3 failure rates for 2021? And also the current C3 failure rates for 21 so far? If anyone needs me to email it to them, I can, um, if you're not writing this down, I don't think a lot of you do. Thank you, Holly.
Jen Brody. You can unmute yourself, at this time I'm going to need to close the chat box because it's being used excessively.
Thank you.
I can open it back up when Jen is speaking to see if anybody else would like to speak. Jen Brody, you can unmute yourself.
Sorry, I thought I was unmuted. Um, can you hear me? Can I be heard?
I can hear you.
Okay, um, this is in response to what Lori said, so not on the, that the, the discussion part was tabled, but I am absolutely confused as to why nobody knew about the, uh, feedback for
Yes, we can hear you.
For the coach. So I actually met with, um, Dr. Prabola, and he, prior to that, said that he was first going to investigate the situation before I met him. I was also told by Mr. Bosher that that was under investigation. I was also told that there would be a committee meeting regarding the behavior and those investigations. I was also told that those investigations have been completed and that that committee met over it. I also know that, uh, Mrs. King forwarded her information to the entire board members, and none of this should be new information. So I'm absolutely and utterly confused as to why that's being said now.
Jen, I'm going to respond to you. It's Lori. Um, just to clarify, Mrs. McPherson tabled it because the community gave some information that none of us were aware about, where, you know, we didn't know about, and it, she needs to look into it.
And with all due respect, I'm not sure how you didn't know because I, like, actually reported it.
Jen, Jen, we just got added information tonight that we were not aware of.
So how much information does it take? That's what, I guess what I'm absolutely appalled at. So there might be additional information, but there wasn't enough information already to, for you guys to make a decision? That's absolutely disgusting. I, I mirror what, uh, Mrs. King said. That's absolutely disgusting. So my daughter is actually sitting here watching the meeting, and she was one of the people that was affected by this. The message that I will have to continue to undo for my daughters is that this will be taken seriously. So when they get older, are they going to think like, hey, there was some sort of abuse, but I'm not going to bother to say anything because I'm not going to be taken seriously, because nobody's going to listen to me, because nobody's going to stand up for me. It is not okay. And you guys had more than enough information. Supposedly two investigations were done. Now, I haven't talked to any other parents that were actually talked to, but I know that there are other parents that had issues, not just me, not just Mrs. King. I know that my husband also reported and was told that that information would be forwarded on. So I don't understand how there wasn't enough information out there. Here's what I personally think. I think you guys thought you'd sneak it right on the agenda, and it would happen just because that's the easier route to go, and that is absolutely horrible and a total, total disservice to our kids and to our daughters, telling them that it's okay what happened to them because they don't have another coach, and nobody can be bothered to go look for one. Like, I just am absolutely appalled at that. It is like absolutely disgusting. And then for my non-agenda items, I would like to say that I am also a part of the United Group with over 200 members representing our community within the school district. Um, and not to minimize any of the mask orders, uh, because I fully believe that it was illegally, um, put upon us. I believe that the school board members should have stood up for what the community wanted, um, and didn't believe was right for our children. But in addition, I would also like to
Brody, you have one minute.
Um, no, I really should have more because that was, that was for other business on the agenda items. Um, so anyway, I would also like to challenge the quarantine principles. Nobody can explain them and say that it makes any sense because vaccinated or unvaccinated children can spread COVID-19 the same. So the quarantine principles are absolutely discriminatory to the non-vaccinated children, and they need to be addressed and made to be the same and make sense. So I understand what the CDC has out there. It does not make sense. We should do better than that because we're smarter and we can do better.
Thank you. Adrian, anyone else?
The chat room was opened again for anyone that would like to put their first and last name in.
I believe Shira and then Jeanette Procoro, I saw that one in there at some point.
We have Shira Knight. First, Shira, you've been unmuted.
Okay, first, I'd like to say that disabling this chat here and there throughout this meeting is, is illegal. We need to be able to have legal objections and state them as they, as they come. Uh, so I just want it to be on the record that disabling the chat is not allowed. Secondly, I'd like to address Holly and Lori stating that we would have to, um, go back and add an agenda item if the mask mandate were to be removed. Um, as it stands right now, it looks like as of December 4th, uh, the mask mandate will no longer be in place. Um, and as, as we talked about it several board meetings ago, um, if that were to happen, it would actually revert back to a parent's choice, whether the child is masked or not. You guys have already voted on that. You've already done it. You've already made that decision, so you can't go back on that now. Um, third, the coaching issue. I've heard what everybody said here. Um, you guys are saying that it would be dealt with individually. I can tell you that this week, I believe it was Monday, we had an extracurricular meeting, and I'm 100% sure that Mrs. King did bring it up about this coach. So you guys were obviously aware of this, and the fact that, um, the, the meeting and the agenda still has this, um, this teacher, which is using that term loosely, as a basketball coach for the girls, that is horrendous. So don't sit there and try to say you didn't know about it because you did. It was on the extracurricular meeting this week as well. It was brought to your attention. Everybody was aware of it. Disgusting. Number four, uh, Mr. Bosher, can you explain to me, Mr. Bosher, I know that you're online right now, so if you could, please address me and, and advise us why you were taking photos of us at the last meeting. Um, I'd like to know why you were doing it, and secondly, who advised you to do that, please? And if you could pause my time so you can answer. Mr. Bosher, I can't see you. You're hiding, but I know that you're there. So if you could please answer my question. Any answer from the board? Anybody have anything to say? I, I have no idea why anybody was taking pictures of anything. However, it is a public meeting, so I'm sure there are people that take pictures of us when we're there and pictures. So I, I'm not saying I know why pictures were taken or, or what the purpose was. Yeah, Holly, it was, it was after the meeting was adjourned, when parents were talking amongst themselves. It was readily known that he was taking pictures. So I don't know if it's to collect data or what, but, um, the other thing that I have to say, Mr. Burke, we've addressed this before with you, the conflict of interest that you have. Um, Ms. Bennett and other people abstain from voting. I don't understand. I know that we all got shut down and it was, you know, everybody was, um, I think Sheila was the one who asked, and she got, you know, booed, but, um, how is it that Mr. Burke, um, is the head of the HR committee for the school board, yet he has a wife that's a teacher? This, this is a clear, clear, clear conflict of interest. If you have others, and I know that there are other teachers unwilling to take issues up to the, up to the school board because of this. So that's something that we need to look into. Mr. Burke should not be on any, any type of teachers', um, committee. I don't think that's, um, appropriate, actually. Um, secondly, why do you guys have, another thing, why do you guys have your faces hidden tonight? You guys asked me last week, if I was the one behind that note asking you to respond, most of you don't even have your faces on the Zoom. If you can't show your face and stand up, follow the policies and stand up for the people you represent, then I am telling you, our group of over 200 parents are 100% asking you to resign tonight. This is enough. You can't show your face, yet you're happy to sit up there and pretend like you're following the rules and doing what's right. So I'll say, our group of united parents is asking you to resign.
So Phil, I'll respond. Shira, just, Shira, just real quick. Your opinion doesn't make it a fact, and so, um, it's been vetted by multiple legal representatives. I can be in charge of the HR committee. I can vote on items. So just because you're offended and it's your opinion, doesn't make you the deciding factor. So that's the answer to your question around why I'm allowed to be on the school board. Any spouse of any district employee is free to run, is free to involve themselves. So I don't appreciate the accusations. You don't know my character, and if you did, you wouldn't be asking the question.
And John Burke is not the only one on that committee. The committee was three. Uh, so if other members thought there was a conflict of interest, they would certainly say so. Uh, and John Burke has never shown any conflict of interest, uh, never dealt with anything regarding his wife.
And
I will say that John Burke's, John Burke's professionalism is beyond reproach.
Agreed.
Um, Shira, just to clarify, um, the reason why, again, it was tabled was because tonight the public gave us some more information that needs, that Mrs. McPherson needs to look into. More information than was given to us before. So therefore, it needs to be looked into. Just for clarification, I wanted to point that out.
Thank you. Adrian, do we have anyone else in the queue?
Jennifer, Jennifer Procoro. You can unmute yourself.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
I just wanted to say that last year, everybody in this group was complaining that their kids were not in school. You have found a way to get them in school, whether they're masked or not. If they're masked, they're in school. Leave it alone. Let it go. Move on to something else. You're wasting your time with this. Just let it go. Get them in school. Keep them in school.
Thank you, Mrs. Procoro.
Thank you.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Mary Jean, do we have anyone else?
I think I need to also clarify, um, just to, it was, uh, reminded me when Shira said that. I made an assumption at the last board meeting that was incorrect. There is another, there are, I was, I was conflating two different groups. So when I had asked if that was the group that sent the letter, that was not the group that, uh, Jamie Walsh was speaking on behalf of. Um, so I, I just wanted to make sure I clarified that, that issue. Um, the other thing was, uh, regarding the discussion of the masks. I'm not suggesting, although I can't speak for everybody else on the board, when I asked for that to be added to the agenda, it wasn't necessarily to revise our initial mask planning. Um, I want to have a discussion about the contact tracing and the contact tracing procedure in the process, and then how we handle masks, um, you know, in, in regard to the contact tracing. So I, I don't want everybody to automatically assume that my personal intent was that I want to maintain some level of restriction regarding masks because that isn't the case. I just, it's going to become important because there are implications with contact tracing and other things that change when masks are back to being optional. And I just wanted to have that conversation in advance of any changes after the holidays, which I think it's also a fair discussion to have because by the time that the holidays are over, all kids four, five to 11 who want to be vaccinated will have had the opportunity to do so, which can change the, the mindset of some of the people who will have to consider how to move forward. So, um, I just, I know everything's a little hostile, a little volatile, um, different sides right now, but I wanted to clarify that it was not, the intention is not like, hey, we got you. We're going to try and put some other new crazy mandate out there locally or something like that. That's not the case.
Thank you, Holly.
Mr. Frye, the last speaker tonight is Jerry Jordan. Jerry, you can unmute yourself.
Good evening. I would like to follow Jeanette's thoughts on these parents who last year are yelling and screaming because the kids are not in school. This year, they're yelling and screaming because they're in school. I don't think you're ever going to make them happy, and I'm very sorry that so much time has been wasted on that because it takes away from things that are important, and I'll use the coaching as one of them. If there is an issue in coaching, perhaps that should be what they have been focused on for the last two months that they've known it's happening, or three months, instead of constantly bantering you about your methods in masking and contact tracing, which none of you have any control over. I also would like to say, once again, I feel I need to defend John Burke's integrity. That man is probably the most professional, the best at confidentiality. He has such a high standard that it really infuriates me when somebody questions him, and especially when most of these people who are throwing these questions out are following someone else who's related to somebody who's on the faculty at Tuncanic area. So if you're going to start throwing out questions of integrity, I would question where a lot of the confidential information that keeps falling into other people's hands is coming from. Thank you.
I'd like to respond to that. This is my final comment as a school board member after 23 years, and I want to say thank you for that speaker. That's all.
Thanks, Rob. We're going to miss you. Else?
I'm not going to miss this.
I bet you still tune in on YouTube.
Rob, after knowing you for as long as I have, I, I, I would not have expected that to be your last comment at a school board meeting, but I just wanted to say thank you. Um, you and I were somewhat at odds coming into this school board, uh, experience, and I got to know you.
Very much of that, aren't we?
Yeah, that, yeah, and over time, you get to know people a little bit better. And so, you know, that's an example of, uh, understand first and judge later. And so, uh, you've been a real friend to me on the board. I appreciate all of our time together, and I don't think our paths are done crossing. So best of luck, and thank you for all your work on the board.
All right. Thanks, Rob.
Yes, definitely. Mary Jean, do we have anyone else in the, in the queue?
Mr. Frye, I had to close the chat room because of inappropriate comments. I can open it pretty quickly.
Okay, thank you.
And try again.
Thank you.
There is no one else in the chat room.
Okay, we have nothing else on the agenda? Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Motion.
Second.
Okay. Thank you. We are adjourned, everyone? Good luck, Rob.
Yes, Rob. Good luck, buddy.